The meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:04 PM. Pastor Gregory Gitch will do the invocation tonight. And we will ask Mr. Bill Myers to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this wonderful city that we have. There's good in it, there's some struggle in it, but now what a blessing to have peace in the streets and to have stable commerce and a banking system and all those things that make it really safe and secure. Thank you for the Police Department, Father. Thank you for the City Council, the City Attorney, and all those people who actually make this a really pleasant place to live. Father, I want to take this moment and just say thank you for all the good things you've blessed us with, every one of us, from the very, very moment we were born. God, thank you for all those things. We ask a special blessing on everybody here, their families, their friends, their relatives, Father, and for the City Council and all the people that represent the city. Bless them as well. Thanks again for your kindness. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, folks. Thank you so much for being here at the meeting. We have a short-looking agenda, but somehow we seem to take some different directions as we go along. So just want to remind our councilmember colleagues, just to let's try to streamline things, just so that we can get some business done, and prep and read your stuff before and everything. Okay? Thank you, guys. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Restarkey.
Mayor Protem Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. Our first presentation is by Hawthorne Police Chief Gary Tomatani and Hawthorne School District Superintendent Dr. Brian Markarian. Gentlemen, please come up to the podium and talk to us.
Good evening, members of the City Council, city staff and officials, and members of the public. Thank you for your attendance tonight and for gracing us with a few minutes at the beginning of tonight's meeting to give a short presentation on a plan that I'm very interested in personally as the police chief, and that I'm hoping that we'll be able to find a way to make this work in conjunction with the Hawthorne School District. With me tonight, I believe that all of you already know him, is Dr. Brian Markarian. He is the Superintendent of the Hawthorne School District. And tonight's presentation is going to be an opportunity that we have before us right now to potentially start providing for, in a partnership with the school district, crossing guard services for the students of the Hawthorne School District. These types of partnerships, especially between the Police Department and the Hawthorne School District, are not something that's new. My predecessor, Chief Mikey, she and Dr. Markarian's predecessor, Dr. Helen Morgan, have long time ago have established that relationships and partnerships are a big part of our success as individual entities. We've had a long-term, phenomenal relationship with the Hawthorne School District for the 29 years that I've been employed as a police officer with this city. In fact, I'm proud to say that in the mid-'90s, one of my first assignments as a Hawthorne Police Officer was as a school resource officer, and I was assigned to the Hawthorne School District at that time. And we've recently, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Markarian, as of last year, so September of last year, we were able to finally place another Hawthorne Police Officer back into the school district as a school resource officer. So in addition to providing for safety services at anything that might happen at a Hawthorne School District staff, we're developing positive relationships with the students within our school district from a very early age with the Police Department. And that is, it is that foundation and that relationship that we have set that gives us an opportunity to maybe expand on that with a crossing guard program, and that's what we're here to present today. These types of programs are significant, so I think it's important to provide some context as to why I feel, as the Chief of Police, that crossing guard services for the city of Hawthorne are an important service that we should try to provide if this is a possibility. All of you already know, but for the members of the public who might not, to provide some context, the city of Hawthorne is approximately six square miles overall with about 90,000 residents inside of it. So that's a very, very highly dense population for a city our size, much greater than a lot of our surrounding neighborhoods and communities. And as a result of that, we have higher traffic congestion, and especially in areas of our local schools, as parents try to drop their children off or pick them up at the end of each school day. Any of you who live close to any of our school sites experience that inconvenience on a daily basis. Adding to that context, within the city of Hawthorne, those six square miles, it equates to approximately 91 and 1/2 linear miles of roadway throughout the city. And on every single one of those roadways, our speed limits currently range on the low end from 25 miles per hour in a residential or a school zone, upwards to 40 miles per hour on some of our major streets. And we do have several of our elementary schools that are abutted right up to a major street. So an example I will use is Corn Blume Elementary, which is right on El Segundo Boulevard. So these are not small residential streets for our city schools. I took the liberty to demonstrate further need here tonight by collecting some traffic stats, but I'm going to add, again, I'm going to add context here, because I did not do as deep a dive as I should have in order to demonstrate how important a crossing guard program would be. But for the past 12 months, going back to June of 2022, up through and including traffic statistics from last week, in the city of Hawthorne, we've documented 65 traffic collisions that involved a pedestrian or a bicyclist. So obviously, I was concentrating on pedestrians and bicyclists because I'm trying to impact the safety of school-aged children as they walk to and from school, or ride their bikes to and from school. Of those 65 documented collisions, 58 had a documented injury. So it's not like we took 65 traffic collisions involving a pedestrian or a bicyclist, and only 10 people were hurt. There were actually 58 of those involved in injury to one of the parties involved, and 48 of those collisions occurred on a school day. Now, for context, again, I want to be completely transparent. I did not like to see if the Monday through Friday occurrence of this traffic accident occurred in the middle of summer break, or winter break, or spring break. But between Monday and Fridays, for the last 12-month period, 48 accidents occurred during the school day, and 13 of those occurred during school hours. So again, providing context, did not take into account location, so I'm not saying that a crossing guard would have prevented 13 injury accidents on a Monday through Friday between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, but I am saying that if it was next to a school and we had a crossing guard there, there is definitely potential that we could have avoided an injury. Continuing with this concept of context that I'd like the council to consider, I took a look at a regional comparison for some of our neighboring jurisdictions. And I would put forth that in the city of Inglewood, there are crossing guards. In the city of Lawndale, there are crossing guards. Redondo Beach, there are crossing guards. Torrance, there are crossing guards. And in the city of Gardena, there are crossing guards, but those are not city-affiliated. In the previous jurisdictions, the city is actually contributing towards crossing guard services for the safety of the students that attend schools in their cities. Here in Hawthorne, we have an interesting setup because there are four different school districts that operate schools in the city of Hawthorne. I'm only here tonight to be in partnership with Dr. Markarian in the Hawthorne School District, which is the biggest school district that we have. But for reference, the Wiseburn School District does provide crossing guard services, but that's done in partnership and in conjunction with the County of Los Angeles. And the Sentinel Valley School District does not provide crossing guard services. However, we are talking about a high school district, so we have some sort of expectation that the students who are of high school age can exert some sort of traffic safety on their own. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Markarian for a little bit of the school district perspective on this topic.
Thank you, Chief Tomatani. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, city staff, members of the audience. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to present on this topic with the chief as we really look at, again, doubling down on safety and security for our students, and I would say actually beyond our student population, for all members of the community, the intersections that we would be looking at. District overview, we actually have 11 schools in the district. We didn't include the high school here, but we're looking at crossing guard support at 10 schools. So that would be our three middle schools and the seven elementary schools in the district. So each and every day, we have 7,200 students who leave their homes and come to our schools, and then return to their homes at the end of the day. And it's our responsibility, our joint responsibility, to make sure that they arrive safely and exit safely and return home. We have had a number of incidents. We had a three-week period where we had three students struck by vehicles. Two were transported to the hospital. Luckily, no major, bless you, no major injuries. But we know that we have dense areas, a lot of traffic congestion, and we have a lot of students coming in and out of those areas each and every day. What we're looking at, proposing, is a partnership to jointly provide crossing guard support through a company, All City Management Services, as the one that we are utilizing or hoping to utilize. That is a company that currently we've been successful in working with LA County Department of Public Works as a school district for a year. We worked with the county to try to get crossing guard support at 135th and Cerise, and we were successful in the county in that unincorporated area, providing a crossing guard. It's a very interesting crosswalk. It's kind of a diagonal offset crosswalk that is a dangerous area that we had heard from a number of parents needed to be addressed, and the county was able to provide that support because it was the unincorporated area. We are currently working with the county, again, at 134th and Yukon, and are very close to getting support there as well. Any areas outside of that, they've been clear they cannot provide the support, but they are working with All City Management Services. I know that's also the company that's working with Lawndale. If you drive down Hawthorne Boulevard in the morning, you see that crossing guard support in the city of Lawndale as well. The reason that we're looking at that type of partnership beyond what we have now, which currently we're utilizing parent volunteers, which we greatly appreciate, our parents who volunteer for that, but the level of training that's needed, as well as more importantly, I think the consistency is the major element. So when we have volunteers that come on Monday and Tuesday, and then they can't come on Wednesday, we have then created the perception that we have a safe intersection or a crosswalk when indeed there's nobody there on that Wednesday, and the parent does not have the feeling of safety of knowing that they can send their child to school on that route. They also provide supervision, as well as, as I said, support when they have an employee who's absent. And then from the administrative side, they do take care of, obviously, the background checks and certifications that are required as well. Potential benefits of the program, what we're hoping to do is establish safe passage to school, or what they call "safe routes" to school, so to really give our families and the community in general confidence that you can arrive at this intersection or crosswalk near the school and know that there is going to be support there for your child or anyone to get safely across that crosswalk to school. We know that some of the benefits will be decreased congestion around the schools. Right now, when we hear from our families, and we hear quite a bit about the need to drive their child to school because they don't feel safe having them walk, that indeed, they may allow their child to walk a few extra blocks to school if they know that there's going to be crossing guard support at those intersections. Also, decreased visible speed from vehicles, right? We know that the visibility of a crossing guard in the intersection is a deterrent to motorists speeding through the intersections as well. So to be successful, we know this initiative is going to require support from the city. So the planning and identifying what those safe routes to school are, visibility from our partners at Hawthorne Police Department, and making sure that the areas around the crossing walks and the intersections have visibility from Traffic Patrol, and also education, making sure that we're getting the word out from us to our families to say that we have safe routes to school, which again, will hopefully alleviate some of the traffic congestion. And then also social media posts, website posts, making sure that we're spreading the word that this is a support that's available to the community and to our students and families.
So just as a short recap for what Dr. Markarian and I are working on and will continue to work on as we try to flesh this idea out, I think context, again, is very important. And it's been a while since I've attended a city council meeting personally and not had a member of the community come up and express some sort of concern about traffic safety throughout the city. Perhaps not specifically related to a school zone, but almost every week that there's a city council meeting, somebody is asking for some sort of traffic control device, and the school district is a very, very supportive stakeholder within our community that is asking for the same type of support from our council. From the Police Department's side, it's unobtrusive. If we are able to provide for crossing guards in some crosswalks and some intersections next to our schools, it means that our police officers don't have to go out and write a citation for somebody who commits a moving violation, and therefore, our residents and the families that live in Hawthorne who have children that go to school in Hawthorne aren't going to be faced with a fine that they might have to pay in traffic court. So the crossing guard can alleviate some of that. I think it's a cost-effective solution as we flesh this out and determine exactly how this partnership will work for both the district and the city, as neither entity would be footing the bill for the entirety of this project. And of course, the main reason for doing this is it increases safety for our school-aged children that are walking to and from schools every morning and every afternoon. So that's something that we really want to see if we can take advantage of and increase that safety level for the youngest members of our community. So just asking for consideration from the council to take into account what we presented today and think it over, and as we flesh this idea out a little bit further, we'll be more than happy to come back and address any other specific questions you might have. But we are available for some questions right now, if you wish.
To the Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Markarian and Chief Tomatani. Thank you very much for bringing this crossing guard situation to our attention. And I have to say that, yes, definitely, I am in total agreement of that because myself, you know, I have the preschool, so the kids, sometimes the parents have to drive the kids over there, and we see cars speeding over those streets. And of course, you know, as a former school board member, we always talk about, you know, the lack of funding for crossing guards that we had for many, many, many years, because, you know, budget crisis, lack of funding to fully fund the education, so all these other issues. So you got my unconditional support on this. So anything, if I have to do a directive to say continuing to dip-dick and then bring us the resolution, and you will have my support, and I'll make a motion to accept it.
To the Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate the report. I don't know, maybe I still need some information. It's a pilot program, from what I understand, correct? Have we ever had crossguards?
So I can only speak on behalf of my personal experience with Hawthorne PD, right? So I've been here for 29 years, and in that 29 years, the Police Department has not provided crossing guard services.
But we've had volunteer services, right, from like, parents and probably PTA and teachers that have given time for crossguard services?
Not from our teaching staff. We have had volunteers from our parents, but with the consistency, we don't have anyone who's out there five days a week in any of the crosswalks. There isn't anybody that's really coordinating that, but we do have parent volunteers that we greatly appreciate at all of our schools.
So I guess the pilot program, is there a length of time that the pilot program's going to be running?
I can't. I think that it would be appropriate if we get a partnership up and running to evaluate it for at least one, for one school year, to see if we can determine that there are any of the anticipated positive effects, a little bit of decreased congestion in the immediate area of a school because a family member might be more comfortable about dropping their child off a block away from the school site, instead of right at the entrance gate to the school.
So it's been a while since I've had little ones, but I know that we're very fortunate, because in the city of Los Angeles, that's their dilemma right now. They don't have crossguards. They don't have crossguards, and they have serious traffic issues at many of the LAUSD schools in Los Angeles, and that was something that the Superintendent has been trying to champion for in LA. We're very fortunate to be a smaller city, but more importantly, have collaborations such as the school district and the Police Department. The funding source is going to come from...
So I'm not prepared to speak on that today, but I do think that there is a potential funding source from the Police Department budget, but I have to flesh that idea out a little bit more, so. But I would not be throwing my support behind this potential pilot program if I didn't feel confident that we would be able to fund it from the existing funds available in the Police Department.
Okay. And then one last question would be, is there more schools in certain areas that need more hands-on with regards to crossguards versus others? Or is this something that we might want to implement across the city?
Our goal would be to implement across all of the schools, but just knowing that we do have some schools that are situated on more active major intersections, so certainly the support would be more critical there.
Yeah.
But the congestion exists around all the schools, and some of the streets that aren't as, they're not as main thoroughfares or busy, that's where we actually see motorists engaging in activities where sometimes they're upset because it's taking a little longer to get around the corner, so they'll accelerate, go to the opposite side of the road, try to cut through the intersection. So the support is definitely needed at all the school sites.
And then I heard one last, that there's a vendor that you already have in mind.
Yeah, I will actually, I will defer to Dr. Markarian on this, but this vendor was provided by the school district because they have successfully shown a track history in some local jurisdictions for providing the type of services that we are interested in.
Okay.
But I do not know what the evaluation process would be.
Okay.
We just propose that vendor as an example because LA County Department of Public Works, that's who they're utilizing at 135th and Cerise, and hopefully 134th and Yukon. That's also the city of Lawndale contracts with for their crossing guard support as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Please bring us the information that was requested.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Human Resources Director Erica Lampkin, please proceed with your second presentation. Employee of the Month.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, remaining councilmembers, city clerk and city treasurer. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the nominees for the May Good Neighbor Award. I will read to you some of the highlights of their submittal. Noel Tua Tia, oh, I'm sorry, will the nominee stand? Want to call your name? He's out of the office here today, so he won't be standing. Noel Tua Tia, sorry, I hope I didn't butcher his name, is part of the Housing Department. Noel has loyally worked for the Hawthorne City for 18 years. As the sole housing inspector, the service and expertise he renders is invaluable to the department. He is the welcome committee for the housing staff and makes everyone feel as though they belong in the department. He does his job with no complaints and is always willing to do more. Noel continuously exemplifies Hawthorne core values but often exceeds in customer service by demonstrating accountability and integrity because he keeps his word and does what he says he will do when he says he will do it. He is very humble and respects internal and external clients even when he is being disrespected, which is often from that department, for those who don't agree with the program regulations. And he displays the highest level of professionalism at all times. Noel is a problem solver and an example of all to follow. Noel's work ethic and ability to bond, sorry, the lighting is bad right here, bond with landlords has created a level of trust that makes them repeat clients. The retention of the landlords is vital to the Housing Department or Housing Choice voucher program. Not only is he good at what he does, but the landlords miss him when he's on vacation. Housing would not be the same without him. Noel has picked up and will pick up anything that is asked of him where he is needed. George Rosales. George is part of the city's IT department. George has been a very big help. George shows dedication in helping other... George shows dedication in helping others by making sure he tries every possible avenue to resolve problems. While IT staff has been slightly understaffed these last few weeks, George has been handling a bulk of the requests for end users at City Hall, sometimes without a second set of hands to help. He has been able to see the needs of the end users there and ensure productivity is not hindered by the technology on site. Everyone in the IT department works extremely hard to ensure that everything and everything gets done and technological needs are met. Where George especially stands out is that despite the workload and distinguished IT staff, he takes his role very seriously and ensures that he handles everything and effective and efficient, in an effective and efficient manner. Our next nominee is Jose M. Gutierrez. No? Okay. Jose began working for the airport as a part-time employee in 2018. He eventually became a full-time airport maintenance worker in 2022. He has shown himself to be responsible, dependable and professional as he continued to take on the additional responsibilities, he, excuse me, additional responsibilities. He treats others with respect and is committed to his job. Jose has exemplified the city's core values of accountability, respect and professionalism in the execution of his duties. He recently assisted in the repair of our prairie gate in which he worked respectfully with contractors and was willing to be flexible and change his schedule to complete the project. Jose has contributed to the successful preservation of safety at the airport by always being dependable on his daily safety checks of airport movement areas and consistently maintaining our lighting system. Jose has distinguished himself from others by consistency and dependability at work. He is reliable and always willing to take on new tasks and responsibilities with a positive attitude. Our next nominee is Ashton Larkin. Ashton is a forensic specialist in the police department. Ashton has been invaluable, has been an invaluable asset since joining our department in August of 2015. Her dedication and expertise have made a significant impact on our ability to solve crimes and ensure the safety of our residents. From the moment Ashton started, she demonstrated an exceptional ability to hit the ground running swiftly, adapting to the demanding and fast-paced environment that comes with working in forensics. Her keen attention to detail has been instrumental in the successful execution of her duties, allowing her to keep up with the high work volume associated with her role. Through her meticulous examination of evidence and analysis, Ashton has played an integral role in uncovering vital information, leading to the identification and prosecution of criminals. Aside from her exceptional skills and professionalism, Ashton possesses a positive attitude that uplifts her colleagues and inspires teamwork. She fosters a collaborative environment with our department, always willing to lend a helping hand and share her knowledge and expertise. Ashton's passion for work shines through in every intersection, making her a true asset to our organization and the community we serve. Mayor and council, those are your nominees for the Good Neighbor Award for May, and the winner is George Rosales. Let's give them all a round of applause. You guys can come and get your certificates.
Hello, we're so glad. You're welcome.
Congratulations, Ashton. Come get yours. And that's your basket, sir. Yeah, that's your basket.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And can they take a picture with you all, please?
Yeah, let's do it.
Yep. Go around. You can go either there. Yeah. If you want. Or you could just take your...
Congrats, congratulations. Awesome, congratulations, guys. It's a great idea, actually, now that I think about it. It's like, I was excited hearing all that information. Oh my God, who's it gonna be? Who's it gonna be?
I don't know. Should've, Jesus. Should've did a bet.
Madam Clerk, the guidelines for oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54 dot 3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
Okay. I only have one, one notice. Is there anybody else? Did you put one of these out, sir? All right. After Olivia Valentine speaks, you'll be next, sir. Okay? Please form a line behind her, please. Please form a line right behind her. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council elected officials. My name is Olivia Valentine, and I'm writing to request approval for me to remain the Chair of the Hawthorne Business Expo Committee, which has produced the Hawthorne Business Expo for the past eight years. This is the mission statement of the Hawthorne Business Expo. Bringing Hawthorne businesses together to support them with resources and opportunities, creating value and economic growth for their businesses and the community. In the past eight years, we have built upon this theme by providing educational resources through panel discussions and seminars featuring experts in their fields and by providing networking opportunities through the exposition. Our theme for Hawthorne Business Expo 2023 was Elevate Your Business Using Technology. And our panel and seminars were focused on showing businesses how the use of the new technologies could increase their market share and their financial success. Even though I am retired from the Hawthorne City Council, I am still a Hawthorne resident and I remain willing to volunteer my time to lead the Hawthorne Business Expo Committee for the benefit of the businesses in the South Bay and particularly the businesses of Hawthorne. I have enclosed letters of support from Hawthorne Businesses for my leadership of the Hawthorne Business Expo Committee, and I am requesting that that also be a city-sponsored event. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next person? Can you identify yourself, name, address, if you could, if you would like to?
I just want to sit this down someplace right here. Excuse me, I apologize.
No problem.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and everyone here that's attending. My legal name is Robert Lee Perry Jr. and my, my children and my grandchildren call me Papa or Jimbo. Call me Jimbo. I'm here because I'm presently intelligent and I'm vagrant, but I have some very good automotive skills, like mechanics and auto body. I'm seeking employment, but for me to get employment, I need housing. I need to be able to keep myself clean. When I first entered Hawthorne was last year in January, and I was informing that they're building a shelter. So I kept in contact with a few people here from October till maybe last month, and they said finally the shelter was open. So I need an equal opportunity, okay, so I can integrate myself in society. I am a non-smoker, non-drinker, illicit drug-free, and when I communicate with the public, I do not utilize profanity and/or vulgarity. So I just need a chance to work and get myself together.
Okay. Sir, thank you for coming. I'm sorry that, you know, you're going through this. Mr. City Manager, can you see about Bridges of Hope for him? And then we also have a unhoused-to-work program with the South Bay Whip, so you can talk to our city manager, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next, please.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm here today because I received a notice that I believe the city is considering approving a rate increase by Cal Water, and I just wanted to kind of give my input on that. And so I believe that'd be okay, right? It's fine, thank you.
No, yeah, you can say whatever you want during this...
Am I audible here? I hope I am. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And so I think we all understand that prices have been pretty crazy lately, and I understand that the city doesn't control anything that has to do with that, really, but I also don't think it should really add to the problem. And I feel like the proposed rate increase by Cal Water...
Please quiet. We need quiet in the audience while people are speaking. If you don't stop talking, we're gonna have you removed. Go ahead and start again if you would like.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, I, I think we all understand that prices have been pretty crazy lately and... One second, please. And that was, as I was saying, I don't think that the city should add to the problem by approving the rate increase that Cal Water is proposing. I think that's a bad idea. Now, I know that the pandemic and the economy we're all dealing with right now might seem unprecedented, but in the history of the United States, there have actually been several periods like this, including economic panics in the 1830s, 1870s and early 1950s. And so in all these situations, they were pretty similar to today in that supply shortages created a big run-up in inflation. And so, but what you might find interesting relating to that is that after this period of high inflation, there was also a period that was the exact opposite, a pronounced deflation. And so that resulted in prices, wages and employment falling, which I think could be the scenario that we could all be heading towards. And so now, some of you might say that because, in response to this, you might say, well, the government has spent a lot of money to try and prop things up. And I think that's true, but I also want to make clear that that's been tried in many other circumstances in many of these periods, and it kind of always falters, right? In the situations that I've described to you, or the scenarios I described earlier, they tried pumping up the economy with a lot of money in the 1830s and the 1870s, and it really didn't work. The periods that where there was faltering, okay, does that...
If you could close out your discussion, please.
Okay, thank you. And so my final point, I guess, is that I think that one more rate increase by Cal Water, no matter how small, might be a bit too much considering that the economy doesn't really seem as strong as some people propose or suggest. And I would just hopefully ask that you consider rejecting the proposed rate increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I see no one further, therefore oral communications is closed. Ordered. Madam Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have three items on the consent calendar. There are items three through five for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item four, city treasurer, request approval of the warrants for June 27, 2023. Item five, resolution number 8421, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving and adopting the City of Hawthorne's investment policy for adoption.
I move? Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you. And we have a public hearing, item six. Madam Clerk, can you please proceed with that?
Now is the time and place for a public hearing and approval of resolution 8422, consenting to a water rate increase proposed by California Water Service Company. Two written protests were received.
Okay. Is there anybody wishing to speak on resolution number 8422, which is item six on the agenda? No? If you wanted to continue, you could, but if, I'm not trying to give it to... You can speak again if you'd like.
I was unaware of how the scheduling was...
No, it's, you could stay there, or you could come up to the podium right now and speak.
I think I made my point.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. So I don't see anybody wishing to speak any further, so oral communications is closed on this item. Resolution number 8422, could you go ahead and read it?
Yep. Resolution number 8422, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, consenting to a water rate increase proposed by California Water Service Company for adoption.
Second. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay. Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. We have items seven through 27. Madam Clerk, we'll be reading these, but we will be voting on item 12 separately. So let's just make sure that we keep that in mind. Also, item 27 was inadvertently included in the city manager's consent calendar. However, it is a city attorney consent item. Therefore, item 27 will also be voted on separately. So let's circle those so we know that we're not, they were already taken out?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please proceed by introducing items seven through 11 and 13 through 26, please.
Item seven, City of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ending, ended March 31, 2023. Item eight, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Executive Group, HEG, special pays. Item nine, construction of speed humps on Darlene Love Street, formerly West 116th Street, between Haas Avenue and Terran Avenue. Item 10, progress payment number two and final acceptance in the amount of $136,855.10 due to Insituform Technologies LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri for sewer pipe rehabilitation project 2023, project number 23-02. Now, item 11, approval of United Way Emergency Fund food and shelter program allocation for the fiscal year 2324 budget. Item 13, Betty Ainsworth Gymnasium Roof Replacement Project, project 23-03, out to rebid. Item 14, award of contract for City of Hawthorne-owned building roof rehabilitation project, project 23-06. Item 15, award of contract for Hawthorne's Jim Thorpe Park and City Hall Council Chamber's lighting project, project 23-07. Item 16, progress payment number three in the amount of $149,055 due to Elick Norbelco Electric of Chino, California, for Highway Safety Improvement Project, Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project, Prairie to Felton Avenue, as project 2106. Item 17, agreement with Beacon Valuation Group, LLC to value and appraise the City of Hawthorne's water system. Item 18, renewal of professional services agreement with LMD Associates Incorporated for the administration of the CDBG and home and other federally funded grant programs. Item 19, the Business Connect, HBC, 2324 budget. Item 20, progress payment number five and final acceptance of, for the first contract year in the amount of $571,523.21 due to Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated of the...
Item eight, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Executive Group, H E G, special pays. Item nine, construction of speed humps on Darlene Love Street, formerly West one hundred sixteenth Street between Haas Avenue and Tarrant Avenue. Item ten, progress payment number two and final acceptance in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars, ten cents due to Insituform Technologies LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri for sewer pipe rehabilitation project two, zero, two, three, project number two, three, dash, zero, two. Now, item eleven, approval of United Way Emergency Fund Food and Shelter Program allocation for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Item thirteen, Betty Ainsworth Gymnasium Roof Replacement Project, project two, three, dash, zero, three, out to rebid. Item fourteen, award of contract for City of Hawthorne-owned building roof rehabilitation project, project two, three, dash, zero, six. Item fifteen, award of contract for Hawthorne's Jim Thorpe Park and City Hall Council Chamber's lighting project, project two, three, dash, zero, seven. Item sixteen, progress payment number three in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand, fifty-five dollars due to Elick Norbelco Electric of Chino, California for Highway Safety Improvement Project Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, one hundred and twentieth Street Improvement Project, Prairie to Felton Avenue as project two, one, zero, six. Item seventeen, agreement with Beacon Valuation Group LLC to value and appraise the City of Hawthorne's water system. Item eighteen, renewal of professional services agreement with L M D Associates Incorporated for the administration of the C D B G and Home and Other Federally Funded Grant Programs. Item nineteen, the Business Connect H B C twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Item twenty, progress payment number five and final acceptance of, for the first contract year in the amount of five hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars, twenty-one cents due to Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated of Silmar, California for general maintenance, project two, two, dash, zero, five. Item twenty, twenty-one, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Police Officers Association, H P O A. Item twenty-two, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Police Management Supervisors Group, H P M S G. Item twenty-three, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, H M E A. Item twenty-four, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne, Hawthorne Executive Group. Item twenty-five, Hawthorne Memorial Center H V A C System Upgrade Project two, three, dash, zero, eight, out to bid. Item twenty-six, new agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Telehealth Fan LLC for the mobile daily virtual telehealth services for the low-income and unhoused residents. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items seven through eleven and thirteen through twenty-six?
To the Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, um, pull on item number eleven for discussion.
Okay.
To the Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to pull seventeen for discussion.
Okay, anybody else?
Can I make a motion on all the others?
Second, please vote.
Voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Um, discussion on item eleven.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, if somebody can kind of talk about this, uh, in greater detail, or have some money from staff, do so.
Absolutely. Um, I will give the honor to our, our clerk, city clerk. She did a great job obtaining this grant, so if you can explain what the grant entails and the hard work you put in to get the grant.
Thank you so much. This grant is from the United Way, is very similar to what Paul implemented when we had the seventy thousand dollars for gift cards, and we gave those gift cards out to people in our community. Uh, this is a sort of watered down. They've eliminated a lot of the funding, but they gave us eleven thousand, two hundred fifty dollars to continue our gift card program. Uh, so what I've decided to do is to, um, purchase gift cards from local businesses only here. Uh, and to give those out to local residents only, like we did before. Uh, so that would be eleven thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. That equals four hundred fifty gift cards of twenty-five dollars. Uh, we have four places that we're looking at to give them out to, and we're gonna do the subway again. Uh, Denny's, Fishbone, and, uh, Azucanella, Azucanella. Uh, those places, we arranged that we could give those gift cards twenty-five dollars apiece, but they will serve two meals with that regardless, regardless if that went over. So those places have already agreed to do that. So that is, the grant is from the United Way. It's the same as the seventy thousand, except it's only eleven thousand this round, but there will be further rounds as well.
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you. I, I have a quick question. Um, you said the Hawthorne community, Hawthorne families. Is there a way you're verifying the?
Driver's license.
Okay, awesome. Right. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote. That's good. Thank you.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, thank you for answering that question. Uh, item seventeen, discussion?
So I wanted to ask, um, I noticed that it said that we're waiving, um, the purchasing fee. Is it because we're not renegotiate, because we're renegotiating the contract with the same company?
Is this on number seventeen?
Number seventeen.
Yes, that's, it's not, we're, we're not waiving any fees. Basically, um, the state law and our purchasing policy and our ordinance allows for this type of agreement with a consultant. There are appraisals, basically, and it allows us to bypass the R F P process, request for bids. So we don't have to put it out for competing bids because when the, the lease was renewed with Cal Waters previously, I believe, was in twenty-eleven, we used the same appraiser, so they're already familiar with all the equipment that would need to be appraised, so. Um, it was in the best interest of the city, so that's why we are doing it this, this way.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion.
A second.
All right, thank you. Uh, please vote on this.
The voting reflects council, mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, guys. Next we have item twelve, which we said we're gonna pull out of order, um, which is a city council and finance authority item. The finance authority meeting is now called to order concurrently with the city of council, city council meeting. Okay, so we're in session as the finance authority. Madam Clerk, please proceed with item twelve.
Item twelve, authorizing and approving the executions of city acknowledgement and Estoppel certificates and escrow agreement as required for the refinancing arrangement of the Marriott Development by Mogul Hospitality Partners. Recommended motion, staff, staff recommends that the city council approve the execution of city acknowledgement and Estoppel certificates for the finance authority to approve the execution of the escrow agreement and authorize the city manager to es, to execute the Estoppel certificate and escrow and all related documents.
To the Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have one question. I don't know who I should go to. I don't know, maybe city manager. Would this have any effect on our proposed, um, inventory or review of our T O T?
No, it will not. Basically, what is happening is the Marriott Hotel across the street is going through a refinance program. Um, I don't know if you recall, uh, several years back when the city council approved a very complex financial arrangement for the hotel to be developed. And that includes a, the T O T tax to be deposited into escrow account with Wells Fargo Bank. And when there's, when the bank or when the developer is, is not, uh, producing income as agreed upon, then they could draw from that T O T escrow account. They're just going through a refinance arrangement in which they're switching banks from Wells Fargo to, um, another bank. I, the name skips my head right now, but in any, in any case, it doesn't affect the agreement. It doesn't affect um, the city's financial situation. We're in the agreement as it is. And, um, we will have to abide by the agreement and, and cooperate.
But the supposed, uh, proposed, I should say, proposed, uh, audit of hotels for T O T, this would not, this, this would still be, uh, go through an audit, just like all other hotels, and their fair share paid as, as, uh, required.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll make a motion.
Second, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council, mayor, chairman, and council members, agency members voting yes.
Okay, so now I will close out the finance authority meeting and continue with the city council meeting. Next we will vote on the city attorney consent, uh, calendar. Madam Clerk, item twenty-seven, please.
Item twenty-seven, claim of Tyler Wilson. Recommended motion, deny the claim of Tyler Wilson. May I have a motion to approve item twenty-seven, Mr. Mayor?
I'll make a motion.
Second, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Next we have the discussion action items. Councilmember Patterson, item twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me one moment. And in, you know, reviewing the budget that we just passed, um, you know, I noticed that while we've not brought back the stipends for our city clerk and city treasurer, so I was proposing that we, um, we include that in our budget.
All right, there's no motion, so we'll proceed with.
Would you like to have any questions otherwise?
If there's no motion, it dies.
I mean, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we included.
So, uh, question. So, uh, we, we used to have these on the budget, right? In the past, bef, before the crisis of twenty?
Oh, wait.
Oh, wait, so, so it used to be on the budget, right? So, so all of us have now the two thousand dollars except the, uh, the two.
The clerk and treasurer.
Clerk and treasurer.
Yeah, when I was, when I was a city treasurer, I had the stipend.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I was city clerk, I didn't have a stipend. Um, I, I'm, I'm actually kind of glad I didn't. The reason I say that is because I was able to use, um, self-development education to get my C M C and go to, you know, training and things that benefited the city clerk's office versus having, uh, a stipend, but it was never, it was never offered to me. I know everybody up here had one, but.
So, but, but, but this stiping is for, uh, for, for, like, our stipend, right, is for the treasurer and the clerk to give to those, uh,
Nonprofits.
Nonprofit that is listed in, in, in our, uh, in our list of, uh, of sponsored events, right?
Correct.
Well, uh, we still, the budget still look good, right?
We got one point four million in surplus.
All right, so I, I second the motion.
All right, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor. Sorry, I can't read it from here. Manning voting no, Patterson voting yes, Patterson and Montero yes, and everyone else no.
Councilmember Patterson, item twenty-nine.
There is a B O S B seven, thirty-four, um, Long Street Shore wants to assess taxes to, uh, residents of, uh, low-income housing and, uh, moderate-income housing and exempt just a portion of those residents. So we want to join some, uh, neighboring cities to oppose it unless they amend it to exempt all the residents.
What's up? Could I ask, uh, what is the government's, the state government's justification in, in doing this and not having it across the board? Are you familiar, or does the city attorney have the information?
Um, basically, it's tax, so the revenues for the state, I'm sure is the primary goal, though I, I can't say that for sure. Um, it's been requested by the, uh, the Millennium that we, the city has jointly, um, agreed to develop as a above-middle-income households. And it's, it would have effect on the residents at that Millennium. I, I think it's called something else. It's called, uh, Arrow. But formerly Millennium. It would have the direct effect on the residents of that, uh, facility, that there would have to be assessed certain tax.
What's, um, okay.
I have a question to the Chair. I don't know if Councilman Patterson can answer, but when we went into agreement with Millennium, it was to assist low, not low income, but, um, based off of your income, right? And we did some, um, we did some agreements and we, yeah, we did some, we did some agreements with them.
It was a J P A formed, and then J P A floated some bonds to acquire the property. And because it's a quasi-government kind of scenario, there's no property taxes being assessed to the ownership. And as, because of that savings, they're able to provide workforce housing to a portion of the residents. And so a portion of residents don't pay full market rate, um, for their units. They pay, um, based upon eighty percent A M I.
Below.
Right, and so, um, somebody has an idea of saying, hey, let's, let's be able to tax, uh, these residents of low income and moderate-income housing. And this bill says, oh, well, let's exempt, um, the eighty percent, uh, people at eighty percent A M I and below. And so which means that those that would be, be at eighty percent to market rate, um, or eighty percent above in, income would be possibly, you know, incur some taxes, uh, for living there. And so I think there's another bill that's, that may be being proposed later through a different route to exempt, to continue to exempt all of the residents, but, uh, they want to treat the residents of these, uh, these buildings the way that, um, the B O E treats, um, businesses.
Housing, J, J P As, housing that's been developed under a J P A. Is that the way you would describe these tenants?
Basically, the, uh, the city sponsored a J P A to take over this development and to make it a, a subsidized for middle-income residents. Um, and most of the cities that have similar program are joining in and opposing this and sending this letter.
We're opposing this, right?
So then, uh, my question ends up being, okay, so did this, these are city-sponsored, uh, J P A-sponsored housing, uh, pro, uh, projects that we've had.
Yes.
Or that exist. How long have they existed? Has this, have they alre, have they been taxed for, for the, the existence of this type of, uh, housing situation?
It's not just J P As, it's any low-income housing, um, you know, government kind of sponsored housing. But no, they've, they've not incurred taxes, so the taxes wouldn't go to the ownership, but we go to the residents. Residents will get a tax bill in the mail, is what they're trying to propose.
That's not in good faith, right? That's not in good faith that we, that what, what we did with Millennium then, right? It, it sounds like they're, they're now gonna benefit and hurt our potential runners.
Basically, and, and that's the position that the Millennium, um, management wants the city to join other cities to, uh, unless that S B seven, three, four is amended to oppose it.
It, it sounds good, but a real quick, quick question. Is the League of California Cities in support of this?
I don't think.
Have they come out?
I don't think we had any, um, indication from the League of California Cities. It's mainly, um, the cities that have the sponsored this type of project.
Which is not every single one, which makes it incumbent on them to take action. All right.
I doubt that is every city in the state of California, but it definitely affects, I think, City of Long Beach and several other big cities.
Uh, I make a motion that we, we write a letter similar to our neighboring cities and opposing unless they amend it.
Second, seconded, uh, please vote.
Voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Update on Colley Park Library Building, Manning?
Thank you, Mayor. One second. The pictures. Thank you. Uh, so the library in, um, east of, uh, Hawthorne, which is on a hundred and twentieth and Van Ness, has been closed for thirty-five years. Um, I thought it was twenty, but it's actually thirty-five. Um, I actually have been in meetings with Supervisor Holly Mitchell and our library director, Sky Patrick, um, trying to get our facility open. Um, the residents have reached out to me, um, asking that we have this library open. And so, um, one of the things, our library has been an eyesore in our community for thirty-five years. And so the city manager, um, our former councilwoman, uh, Olivia Valentine, had worked on, uh, trying to get this library open, and sadly, they were unsuccessful. Um, and they haven't done, the county hadn't done anything to it. So in recent conversations, um, they agreed to update and fix up our library on the outside of the library. I'm still in negotiations, um, conversations with getting the inside of it, but I wanted you all to see what they've done so far on the outside. And this is, um, work that they've done within, uh, a thirty-day period of having a conversation about fixing up this library so it won't be an eyesore. And it was just in time for our Juneteenth, uh, celebration, so if you could just take a quick look at what it looked like before, um, and this is what it looked like now. And go to the next slide. So that's what it looked like before, and then he could go to the next one, and this is what it looks like now. So it no longer looks like an eyesore, um, in our community. And again, um, I've been in conversations to, uh, get programming on the inside. And so I'm gonna be continuing to have those conversations and also work with my fellow, uh, council members so that we can get this library open and, uh, make sure that the constituents are getting the services, uh, that they need, you know, STEM. We want to make sure that our kids are successful. We want to make sure that our seniors have somewhere to go. We want different programmings within that facility. So just know that we are working to make sure that you guys have something in this library that's been closed for thirty-five years. Thank you.
To the Chair. So they're not gonna open it because why?
Uh, currently, they're using the inside for storage for their I T department. Um, they're, sadly, their, um, headquarters burnt down. It was located in the city of Downey, and it burnt down, so they moved their services here. Um, and so they've been operating out of this location. Um, so we're, we're, we're gonna get this library. So we're, we're, we're gonna get this library open for our residents. It's gonna take some time, but just know that we're gonna make it happen. Thank you.
Well, to the Chair. Just, let, let me say, you know, it, it goes back, even in 2001, 2001, we lobbied Yvonne Burke, that was used to be the Board Supervisor, to open that as a community center. And they said, no, no, because of the IT, because they have, they said they have some of the brain of the computers in that, in that facility. So since 2001, they've been saying, no, 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 no. So good luck on that one.
Yeah, well, the conversation definitely has changed in a positive direction. So we'll all be celebrating the opening of the inside altogether soon.
To the Chair, and just make sure that the, the opening comes with a fully funded from the, from the County of Los Angeles. No money from the city. Okay, fully funded from the, from the, from the County of Los Angeles, no money from, from general funding, okay? So make sure that is something.
Patterson? You were, okay. Any, any for the comments?
I have no comments, other than I look forward to seeing you all at the celebration. At the ribbon cutting of the inside.
It looks good, it looks good, good job.
Thank you.
No, I mean, look, the reality, we've kind of, if you have a magic wand, oh, that's awesome, that's cool. All right, I'm not saying, but we've been through this, we've been through this path before, and that's just the only reason why we're saying this.
I understand that, but I will say that within that time, I have not seen the outside of that library. Nothing has been done. And the fact that they've taken the time to do something to the outside, that means that it's moving in a positive direction, right? So if you talk about 35 years, and you had zero things happening, and then now you have them who has taken the time to paint the building and to beautify the outside, I look at that as a plus, positive side, moving forward, not backwards or stalemate, but moving forward. So you all know it took me 10 years to get here. So that means that I'm resilient, and I don't take no for an answer. So, all I'm saying is, see you at the ribbon cutting.
All right.
And that's great and everything, there's no buts. Look, the thing is, we support you. Obviously, if you have like a way of making this happen on your end, through your discussions. I mean, we've supported all the previous, recent councilwoman Valentine, when she was doing it, and previous efforts that we had. So whatever you need from us to take a look at that and see if we could open it up. But I'm not gonna get close to no ribbon cutting, because I still owe money to the library. So I'm not gonna get close, you guys tell me how it is.
See, that's the reason the library is closed, because the mayor owed money.
It was that much money?
14 million.
It's been, it's been building entrance ever since.
Okay, no, we're all good, I, I paid it all back, I'm just kidding. Okay. Item 31, Councilmember Manning?
Yes, so this is something that I bought up early on, maybe two or three months. I reached out, I had given the directive to the city manager about giving our staff time off on the holidays. And I, we have approximately 55 employees of an estimate of 100 employees that took off last year. Some requested, had been denied due to short staff. Most of the staff is off during this time. So I was proposing that we close on, let me see, projected close dates are 12/27 and 12/28. And it won't impact the budget, right, city manager?
Projecting that city business wouldn't be conducted that week. As we all know, most cities and most businesses do shut down for the holidays. So my projection would be, we would not assume to lose any revenue for those two days.
So I'm asking my council members, or making a motion, to support giving our city employees those days off.
To the Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So city manager, the 29th of December is a Friday, I'm, I'm assuming that's our regular Friday off?
Yes, that's correct.
Because we have alternating Fridays off?
Yes, that is all Friday.
And that happens to fall on an off day.
And what about the 26th?
If it was up to me, I'd give them, I'd give them all the way up through January. Come back, come back, January 8th.
Question on the 26th, after the Christmas Day.
If I can answer that, due to Sunday being a scheduled off day, that would be Christmas Eve, normally that would be an off day. It carries over to the 25th, Christmas follows, carries over to the 26th.
And this year, New Year's is on the 31st, which is Sunday, and the first would be a Monday, which is, is off already, right? The first Monday. So, so they're gonna have the 27th, the 28th, the 29th, the 30th, 31st, the first. Wow.
It's a week.
I think you all have it pretty good out there.
It's one, it's one week off, but it's only affect to us two days.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
I'll support that.
Okay, I made the motion, you going second?
Please vote.
Thank you.
Voting reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Elected officials reports. City Treasurer, please.
Good evening, everyone. Upon reviewing the email that Elise sent out, Felice sent out this evening, I have already reached out to Bank of the West regarding our approved rate we discussed back in April. So our representative is on vacation, and I will provide an update on that next meeting. Let's see, congratulations to George Gonzalez for Employee of the Month. On June 18th, I attended the first annual Father's Day Bike Ride. Thank you to HPD, who was there, out there making sure all the riders were safe. I enjoyed talking to many of the residents in riding and talking to the officers. So thank you also to all the city staff along the bike route. My daughter and myself enjoyed ourselves, so thank you to Councilwoman Katrina Manning and HPD for hosting such a fun event. Juneteenth over at Holly Park was a huge treat as well, hosted by Councilman Alex Montero. Kudos to Ruby for her efforts, she's not in the audience tonight, and Mohammed Awadala as well. Thank you to Holly Park HOA for always being so welcoming over there, it was a huge treat. Let's see, sorry about that. And, and I, I can't say enough, but thank you to all the staff who were there participating on their own time. Segue, so now that the investment policy has been updated, I'll be working on the certification for the investment policy with, by the CMTA. I'll be working on that paperwork and forwarding that to Elise soon. Let's see, sorry about that. Not that many of you know or probably care, but Fed paused interest rates hikes, hikes this month, so inflation rate declined, but it's still elevated, prices did rise 4%. The Fed did say the banking system is sound and resilient, so technically, all our money is safe. Oh, I want to say kudos to HPD for winning the Good Neighbor Games. I know a few PD officers personally, so kudos to y'all. I'm sorry for all the other departments, but I'm sure you guys all have fun, but kudos to HPD for winning that. Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming out, enjoy the rest of your evening, and have a safe and sane and happy 4th of July.
Okay, 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 thank you. City Clerk, please.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight, we really do appreciate you all staying. I wanted to give a shout out to the Hawthorne Police Department for the Good Neighbors Game. I was in attendance and had a good time out. It was nice to see HPD out there as well, serving hot dogs, Mo Awadala. It was a lot of fun and very well attended. I wanted to also congratulate Katrina Manning for the first annual bike ride. Looked like a lot of fun, I actually saw the mayor out there riding his bike, sort of kinda, and.
No, 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 just let her, this is her time, dude, she can say whatever she wants. This is her time.
But also, that kind of led into the Juneteenth event, which was absolutely fabulous. The vibe out was just amazing, it was a perfect day. Alex, you really do a fabulous job with that. Ruby, thank you so much for that. Again, Hawthorne Police Department and Mo Awadala, also there making hot dogs and talking with community members, it was a lot of fun. I wanted to say happy birthday to David, happy belated birthday to David, and happy Father's Day to all the fathers here and all the fathers out there as well. Food drive is this week, so everybody, make sure you let people know that the Saturday food will be offered. And I think that... One more thing, in the future, coming up in October, I am going to start working with our phone system here, actually. I am taking a course in artificial intelligence, and my project is actually to revamp our phone systems to make it easier for people to communicate with us. Right now, they call in and sometimes they just get a voicemail, and this will actually guide them to a department, and maybe even depending on departmental needs. For example, the business department, if they struggle with people doing their business license, we may be able to create some sort of, you know, some sort of a line where people can actually go on and have an AI robot or AI intelligence help them through their business application. So we can look for that probably, I want to say, at the beginning of the year, but maybe later this year that will start, begin to roll out. But there are a lot of things that have to be done for it, I'm doing surveys. And also, one more thing, FITA Streets Cali is helping out, that's a nonprofit that actually came through on my behalf, or I shouldn't say on my behalf, but they came through because they know me, and they're helping with the homeless department. They're actually doing a 24-hour telethon where they're going around Hawthorne and giving out items to our residents. Also, another nonprofit of, that came through for me, donated about 1,000 pairs of socks to Angie's, to Angie's Donation Drive, as well as about 150 sweatshirts and t-shirts. That is pretty much all for me, thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone, thank you for coming. Yeah, first I have to say thank you to all the staff, because it's almost the end of the fiscal year, right, June 30th? So new fiscal year will begin July 1st, so thank you all the department for keeping the budget surplus, so thank you very much for that. First, I want to say, you know, thank you to the, all the team, actually, you know, that put the Juneteenth together. So it's not just Alex Montero, because you know, we have all the city staff, you know, Community Service Department, the HPD, all the department that participate, Public Works, you know, the cable, the TV. So Juneteenth was great success at Holly Park. I want to thank the Holly Park Neighborhood Association, the Park Village, especially Ruby and Ryan from the Holly Park Neighborhood Association, all the residents that came in, you know, from Mr. Lowe to Darvis, to all the other neighbors there, and also the Tradition Greens was there also. And also, I want to thank the Supervisor Holly Mitchell that sent us a proclamation, and also the Congresswoman Maxine Water sent us a certificate of appreciating to celebrate the Juneteenth. Also, I was invited to, to go to San Pedro at the Korean, you know, Friendship Bell on, on June 19, because, you know, they ring the bell, I think it was only four times a year. So now they're going to be ringing, I think, I think it was the second year they did it for the Juneteenth to celebrate Juneteenth with the Korean community and the Friendship Bell. So we rang that bell 13 times, it was, it was kind of fun, so it was, it was, it was an honor to be there. Yeah, so, so it was good, it was good, so everything people have said, especially, you know, the Kiwanis Club, you know, for cooking the, the hot dogs. Mohammed was there, so I have to mention Mohammed Awadala, he always be cooking hot dogs. I want to thank the Chief and the Hawthorne School District for that great idea about the Crossing Guard pilot project. So you have my, like I said, 120% support, so I look forward to see the program and more detail on that one. I want to say, you know, again, you know, congratulation to George, right, for the, from the IT department for the Good Neighbor Award. So he deserved it, because he always helping us with the computers, so thank you for that. I want to say thank you to Erica from the Human Resources, so to, to come up with a great idea about this Good Neighbor Award, so appreciate that. And I know, you know, Vaughn has something to do with that too, so thank you very much. And again, you know, continue to do good work over there, because, you know, we've been getting good feedback from the, from the community that all the works that we've been doing in our streets, and we're not even seeing some crimes, you know, so thank you, Chief, for keeping us safe every night. Again, you know, I have to say that things are looking good, and that's, oh! We have a lot of flyers over here, so Business Connect is coming up on Monday, August 27th, at 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Courtyard Library, right? And then we have, of course, the Wolf Fest is coming, September 16th, from 10:00 to 6:00 PM, don't forget the Wolf Fest. Okay, so we got flyers, we're gonna have live music, art and craft, jumper, entertainment, so come up out and have fun. That's it for now, and good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Katrina Manning, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like my council members, if you could please stand with me so that we can give our, our police department and our staff congratulations for all the hard work that they've been doing. Come on, stand up, y'all. I, I just want to say how much I appreciate all you guys, y'all been working y'all butts off, and y'all come and work on the weekends, and you just donate so much of your time, and I just think about this big production that we had with Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, when she had her event, and then the mayor, he had his event, the Gem Fest, and then this past weekend with the Father's Day Bike Ride, and then the Juneteenth. It was an amazing production, and so the hard work that you guys do countless hours, week after week after week, I truly appreciate it, and I just wanted to take this time to give y'all y'all flowers, so thank you so much. Also, I'd like to say happy birthday, or belated birthday, to David Patterson. Also, I want to just reiterate again, congratulations to Mayor Pro Tem for her doctrine that she celebrated this weekend. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to an amazing event. Alex Montero, Ruby Cohen, and Ryan Richards, and all of the people that were involved in making Juneteenth an amazing event. I had such a wonderful time, I really enjoyed the music, it was really good, the decorations were nice. I don't know who bought it, but they had fish, little sharks, baby sharks out there. Yeah, I didn't touch them, but they were there.
It's aquarium, I travel aquarium.
Yeah. Also, I want to say that I wholeheartedly support the Crossing Guard program. I mean, one of the reasons that we're here is part of making sure that our residents are safe, and... Um, and it's so important for our kids to be protected. Um, I think about the, the kid that were here, I think a month ago, that, that passed away, the Deion family. Yeah, and so I think about him when we think about this cross guard. So it's really, really important. And, um, I'm excited to know that we'll be one of the few people implementing this pilot program. So I too hold heartedly support that program. Um, also, I'd like to say congratulations to George Gonzalez for being Employee of the Month. That's an amazing, amazing thing um, to be recognized, um, for the work that you're doing. We appreciate the work that you're doing. I know he's helped me several times. Um, technology is no joke. Also, um, I'd like to say, um, our Father's Day Bike Ride, I want to say thank you to the Police Department for sponsoring it with me. I truly appreciate you. Um, Public Works, you guys, oh my God, you guys did an amazing job. It was my first time on a bike in like eight years, and I actually, um, kept up with the chief. Uh, we did four miles and, and I made it. So thank you so much, and thank you to all the people that came out to support it. Um, I look forward to doing it next year. It's gonna be very, it's gonna be bigger. We're gonna have, um, more people. We had like a little six-year-old that was riding and he was going a little faster than me, so. Um, but it was great. And then the last thing that I want to say is, let me see. The last thing that I want to say is that, um, I was very excited about being a part or taking over the Business Expo. I appreciate, uh, our former councilwoman, Olivia Valentine, and the great work that she's done over the years. But, um, I'm newly elected and I'm excited to take over that, uh, responsibility. And I, I truly believe that this position is really for current elected officials. And it's important that we don't open the floodgates to allowing people, um, to be a part of something that's specifically for the elected officials. So, um, I appreciate the work that you've done all the years. I appreciate your knowledge. I'm hoping that you'll, um, you know, continue to be a part and, and work, but I look forward to, uh, taking over that responsibility for the city. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot. I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm not gonna just sidestep you on that one, but...
I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was looking at it and I forgot to, to mention one more thing. Um, I had an, I was invited by the City of Inglewood, um, Councilwoman Dion Fogg to their music festival. And I had an amazing time. And, you know, when I was there, all I can think about is how wonderful that would be for our city to have a concert series, um, in the summer. So I would love, um, to have something like that in our city. And I know that our mayor, uh, definitely, uh, wants something like that. So, um, I'm asking the city manager as a directive to looking into the opportunity for us to do, to do that.
No, 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 there's no go, there's no interruptions.
The Wolf Fest is the music festival of the summer.
Music Concert Series. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first, uh, thank everybody for their birthday wishes. I appreciate it. And, um, and thanks for the cake, uh, the city manager had, had in the back. So I definitely appreciate that. It looks like it was chocolate, which is my favorite. Yeah.
No interruptions, no interruptions.
Nobody's touched it yet, so you can help yourself. Uh, I want to thank, uh, city staff and the Police Department for all your hard work and your contribution. I'm always impressed by how often I see everybody at all these different events that, that, that are put on by the city and, um, at all the different, uh, community events, that the, the Business Connect, all, you know, just so many different contributions to the city that's outside your regular duties. And I definitely appreciate you guys and, uh, want to thank the Police Department for giving me the opportunity, kind of get to get to know different officers, and get to understand kind of, uh, what you guys go through and some of your training. And definitely it's been an eye-opener for me. And I definitely appreciate that as well. Uh, speaking of events though, uh, Mr. City Manager, could you provide the council with a report of the net cost of, uh, every event we've done in fiscal year 2022, 2023? Uh, so we have an idea of, you know, what we're spending on events. Uh, I do want to congratulate the city treasurer for, uh, updating the investment policy. Uh, I remember when I was city treasurer, I don't think the investment policy had ever been updated in 20-something years and, um, you know, when I went, you know, authored that policy, that was the first time in, in forever. And, and now it's been updated, you know, 10 years later, or somebody, something like that, years later. So definitely appreciate you, uh, making that happen and also getting it certified by the CMTA, which is something I don't think we've ever had done. And so, yeah, definitely want to, want to congratulate you for those hard, those, those hard works and, and that contribution to the city. I definitely support the, the Crossing Guard Pilot Program with Hawthorne School District. I'd definitely like to see, you know, how we can, you know, bring that to fruition. Anything we can do to keep the, the children of our neighborhood safe, that'd be, uh, that'd be great. I think the community would really appreciate that. And I want to congratulate everybody that was, uh, nominated for Employee of the Month. Uh, I, I see that everybody's contribution was very lengthy. And it was just great to see that we have so many employees that really go over and above to make a contribution to our, to our city and make things easier for, easier for everybody else within the departments, within the city hall, as well as make things easier for the, the community. And of course, I want to congratulate George for, for winning Employee of the Month. And, um, definitely appreciate it how, you know, he came fully suited to, to win his award. Um, looked very sharp. Um, definitely putting the pressure on me. I need to step up my suit game. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And happy birthday. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, let me first say happy birthday to Councilmember Patterson. Uh, look forward to having some cake. Um, I want to just give kudos to our city for everyone, uh, that participated in the toiletry drive, the inventory. I have a list of all the donations that were made, and I'm learning there were some more added. So, uh, we had about 20, uh, deodorant, 15 body wash, 15 shampoo, five slippers, 30 toothpaste, 10 face wash, 25 soap, 35 toothbrush, 10, uh, wet wipes, two boxes of mask, five razors, I'm assuming packages of razors, face and body cream, 10, socks, 50 plus the 200, from what I understand, that came from the city clerk's office. Um, toilet paper, there was two bags, care packages are 14, was 14, and then there was additional t-shirts and sweatshirts. Um, again, I can't, uh, say enough how appreciative we are of everyone's, um, assistance in efforts to provide our Bridge of House, Bridge of Hope Housing, uh, some toiletries. So thank you for that. I also just want to say real quick, because I, I don't want folks to leave before I just acknowledge. Um, I want to thank, um, the individual that spoke and advocated, uh, their concerns with regards to the water increase. Um, I appreciate the civic engagement. I think it's very important when our community, um, engages and provides either or support or not. Um, I wish there was more participation from the community to voice their concerns, if there were any concerns. However, um, it's the process in which our government, uh, strives and or not. And it's important for participation from the community. So I just want to acknowledge that, uh, to know that you are appreciated for your words and expressing your opinion. I appreciate that. Um, I also just want to, uh, thank all of those that were, um, honored, honorees today for Employee of the Month, and Noah, and, uh, George, and Jose, and Ashton. Great work to you all. Continued, uh, efforts to, uh, shine on, uh, all the work that you're doing and making our city look great. Appreciate that. Um, there are a couple of other things, um. I want to just, uh, provide a, um, a request if we can. I, I did receive maybe a call or two with regards to, I don't know if it's a street takeover or just maybe racing, um, a lot on 120th, uh, Prairie Avenue. Uh, some of these bigger streets, um, and they're usually happening early morning, two, three o'clock in the morning. Um, and it's pretty scary. It's pretty scary because, um, I know in Prairie, there's a railroad. And when you hit that railroad, racing over that, sometimes your cargo could go airborne and there's a lot of, you know, traffic accidents and things like this. And there are a lot of concerns with regards to those types of scenarios, but, um, I want to see how, um, what we're, what we're doing to, to address those. I know there's been issues in Compton. I know there's been issues in other cities. And they're taking, uh, steps and measures to combat that. It's not an easy task, and I understand that. However, I want to know if there's maybe more policing efforts around the hours that we're hearing this, things like this. Uh, but again, kudos to our Police Department and all that you do. And I can't express enough how fortunate we are in the City of Hawthorne to have the policing that we do and the quickness that we have to address any public safety concern. And so I just want to put that out there. Um, and, and, um, I really, I, I really do appreciate, uh, just the response in which we have when community, um, calls on our police. But other than that, uh, thanks, thanks to everyone, um, for their agenda items. Great work to everybody. Uh, city attorneys, city manager for your efforts. Thank you to everyone that participated and came to my commencement on the 17th. I couldn't participate in Juneteenth. Um, thank you to Captain Port. Thank you to Sergeant Craig for coming to my commencement. Thank you to Pastor Greg. Thank you to, uh, Mr. Myers. Um, and thank you to those that just provided great words of encouragement and, um, their greetings. And also a cake delivered to my home. I appreciate that. And, uh, I truly do, uh, appreciate, uh, not only the friendship, but the great gestures that, uh, everyone expressed. And with that, Mayor, I will leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Spreading my notes here. Thank you, guys. All right, so, um, I just wanted to remind the, the community, what day is it? And we only have one council meeting in July. Is that right, Mr. City Manager? Which was, which is the one that we're not gonna have, just so that everybody knows.
July 13th, if I think that's correct.
July 13th. Okay, so we're gonna have one, July, what's?
July 11th, I apologize.
11 plus 14 would be the 25th, right? We'll have the...
Yes, that's correct.
So we only have one meeting, so just want to let you guys know. I know you, I don't want you guys to be outside. You guys right there, you know, you know, the Haggardys and, you know, over here. Our group up here, over there, saying, what's happened? These guys abandoned us. And you, you get mad at us and speak, speak oral communications against us or anything crazy.
I'm just saying, that's what we had collected.
All right. So, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, Katrina Manning on her event, the Bike Ride. I enjoyed myself, the city clerk. I enjoyed myself. And I invite you maybe next year. We could do a tandem bike or something, and, you know, we'll just make that happen. So, I'll know if you're not there, if I can't get that thing going, right?
Yeah, kudos to Katrina.
So just, oh no, just kidding. It was fun. It was fun. I enjoyed it. Nice, smooth ride, et cetera.
I got lucky.
So, uh, and then, uh, Juneteenth, I congratulate everyone who helped organize the event, the Juneteenth event. Um, I stayed only for a brief minute because I had to head off for a funeral for, uh, one of the, uh, Sentinel Valley Council, uh, councils. Uh, father who passed away, Hugo Rojas, so we send his condolences once more. So, uh, I congratulate you guys on the Juneteenth event. And, um, I did see the Holly Park Co-owners Association in full force, uh, Manning the different boots. Uh, Muhammad Awadala was there too, so we congratulate him on cooking with the, uh, gentleman from the Holly Park Co-owners Association back there. They were all just, uh, having fun. It was just a really good social event. And I heard that the music was good too, so, uh, hope to attend the next year's event. And then I don't have any more funerals to attend to, but it's, things are changing right now. So I want to congratulate the young man who came and spoke and expressed themselves on the specific issue with the water. Um, we did research. We talked to the water company and we did our own independent research. And we saw that this would be, uh, a low impact to the community. So that's why, at least for myself, I speak for myself, I was able to move forward with that. But, um, I commend you for coming up. You can come up and say whatever you want to say to the city council. Um, however many times you want to come up, every single council meeting, you can come up and speak, okay? The only thing we ask is that you don't, you know, uh, try to stay as professional as possible. And, uh, and even if you don't do that, you can still go ahead and do that. The only thing that's not, you can talk however you want. Um, but there's a limit. When people are threatened up here on the council, uh, or people are threatening in the audience, that's, that's your, uh, you, you can say whatever you want, but then you can, you also suffer the cons, the legal consequences of saying certain things in public. Nobody's stopping you from saying it, but you still are, uh, subject to, uh, the responsibility of having said what you said, right? So, uh, I was, my brother who lives in Chino, he invited me to an event. And I said, okay, I want to go. Okay, I haven't seen my, my brother and his two kids and his two daughters, you know, and my sister-in-law. Come over, it's gonna be cool. It's gonna be in the park and everything. So I, I headed over there, got off of the freeway, and I literally went through Cove, uh, Covina. There was a concert in the park there. There was a concert on Thursday, right? Then I went through Diamond Bar. There was another concert. So I finally got to Chino Hills, and that's where we were gonna go see this 80s band at the concert in the park. And then my brother had previously told me that Pomona has them, uh, Ontario has them, Chino itself has them, Corona has them. It's like, what the heck? I mean, we know that that's a different type of neighborhood, it's not as, uh, more spacious, the parks are larger, et cetera. But I really was excited. It was, the band wasn't that great, but they could have done a better jo, uh, a better job of singing Bryan Adams or something, man, come on. But, but, um, it got me really excited. Manhattan Beach? Yeah, but they're just... They're a different breed over there, though, yeah. They're a different breed. We're, we're more party people over here. And so I want to lend to that. Yeah, over there, they call like the police because you have the radio on or stuff. There's crazy people over there. But I got really excited. And so I started talking to the city manager. And I was like, oh, yeah, man, you know, we should have something like this. And I was really excited because I, I envisioned something, uh, in, in the park. You know, uh, it doesn't have to be a Thursday. You know, over there, they had an hour and a half from 7:00 to 8:30. What kind of crap is that, man? That's hardly anything. You hardly get anything for that. But a decent amount of time where you get to hear the music and then go home and relax. For, maybe on Friday, that's the way you close out your Fridays, maybe three hours on Friday, 7:00 to 10:00 or something. Uh, regular, over the summer, uh, bands that I saw that, that they were playing at these, with the little flyers that I got for, a classic rock cover band, an 80s cover band, a 70s disco band, R and B soul. There was like three different Selena cover bands out there. So I'm like, I got excited. Yeah, that sounds really cool. You know, maybe a Spanish music band or whatever. But, um, the whole purpose of that is just to have something to bring out the community, just bring us into the fold, like other cities. It doesn't have to be a big production, starting off small. We have, we, you know, we could either volunteer bands or have a small budget for a band, you know, uh, to, you know, one of these variety of bands, just have it on a, like I said, Friday, 7:00 to 10:00. Regular and just people come out, you know, it's expected. I think it'd be fun. I just think it'd be fun. And then I found out that my council colleague, you know, she hit me up and said, hey, you know, I heard that you were talking about this. And I said, and she said, yeah. So it's like, things are coming together. And then I talked to our city manager. But what makes me more excited is that, it's how are we gonna stage this? Why every single time we have to set up, oh, we gotta set up a stage? So I know that we were in the, looking for a, a stage. One of those that are like, uh, you, you can, uh, drive it around and, uh, put it in place, open up the front and open up the sides, and you got a stage. and open up the sides and you got a stage right there for yourself. And we were looking at it through the, uh, recent city manager, Arnie Shadber. Uh, but that didn't come to fruition. I think there were some challenges, uh, financially, but now that we're in good shape and we have ARPA funding, uh, and we have a great city manager in place now. Right? You know where I'm going with this?
Mm-hmm. I'm excited too, Mayor.
So, and yes, we have, uh, World Fest too. So is to, um, I would like to offer a directive from, uh, behalf of my city council colleagues to look into this further about the stage. Because what's happening right now is that, you know, Councilmember Montero has to pay a fee for his, uh, World Fest city-sponsored event. You have to pay a fee for that. Other events that we have that are city-sponsored events I'm talking about have to rent the stage. So I heard that they're like between thirty to fifty thousand bucks, might be closer to thirty. So I think it'll pay itself off real quick. So my directive is that you, uh, go ahead and look for something like that. Uh, we'll talk amongst the council member colleagues, see if you wanna go through with it, but, but at the same time, I'd like to task you to, uh, determine the rules of usage. Keeping in mind that this is for city events only. Everybody and their mother's gonna hit us up, how can I borrow it for this picnic? And I would, no, 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 no. This needs to, there has to be some rules and some limits. The city events only. Because what happens? Oh, we're lending it out to so-and-so group over here, like, you know. They use the swimming pool over here and they're all from Manhattan Beach, you know? Which I still, I'm not happy with that situation. You know, and they're, it's locked up. And, you know, one of my council colleagues here can't, you know, have an event or like, Councilmember Patterson wants to have an event finally, you know, he doesn't have something available to be able to have a stage it. So, um, I think it's important that we go ahead and move forward with that. Okay? Good? All right. So, uh, all right, let's go. Next, we have two closed sessions. Madam Clerk, please read items thirty-two and thirty-three.
Item thirty-two, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five six dot eight, five four nine five four dot five B, properties, combine two lots of approximately nineteen thousand six hundred thirty-eight square feet of land located at one one six zero five Hawthorne Boulevard, APN four zero four four dash zero one five dash zero two five, and four four one six West one hundred sixteenth Street, APN four zero four four zero one five zero zero six. Situated on the west side of Hawthorne Boulevard between one hundred and seventeenth and one hundred and eighteenth. City negotiator Von Truenoris, city manager, other party Ga Z, Ga Z Wu, under negotiation. Price terms of payment of the payment, term of payment of the payments. Item thirty-three, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five six dot eight, five four nine five four dot five B, properties. Approximately point nine one acres of land is located at one three zero zero seven Yukon Avenue, APN four zero five zero zero one four zero zero two. City negotiator Von Truenoris, city manager, other party, one three zero zero seven Yukon Avenue Hawthorne LLC, under negotiation, price and terms of payment.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on item thirty-three? Seeing no one, if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed. Order. We will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at seven fifty-three. Order at 8:22 PM with all members, with three members present, two of which are still here, but we just needed a quorum to get this back on track. So, all council members are present, but with three people on the dice. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda listed as items 32 and 33. City Attorney Kim, what can you tell us?
Yes, the city council met in closed session. Report were, reports were provided on both matters. And, city council gave directions and no action was taken.
Is there anything further from council members or staff? If not, this meeting is adjourned at 8:22.